Good afternoon and welcome to the Honolulu Liquor Commission. If you are appearing today, please introduce yourself and your client and spell your name. If you're here testifying, please introduce yourself, spell your name, and be sworn in with by Ms. Rai. Commissioners, I see we have some minutes for consideration.
Yeah, motion to approve the minutes of the sixteenth and twenty-first meetings as previously circulated. Second.
And move the second, Ms. Rai, the rule of for the approval of the sixteenth and the twenty-first meeting. Ms. Rai, the rule, please.
Ganabon.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Min.
Aye.
Mia Shiro.
Aye.
O'Donnell.
Aye. The minutes of the sixteenth and twenty-first meeting are approved. Moving into the preliminary hearing, agenda item number one, are we ready, Ms. Rai?
Yes, this Wu is in the room.
Thank you. This is application number two-one dash two-two-five-five-seven from Liquor and C Mart LLC. Gentlemen.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, and Min Young Ho on behalf of Liquor and C Mart LLC. No corrections necessary to the investigative report.
Very good. Excuse me, Ms. Wu, I misspoke. Commissioners?
Motion to approve application number two-one dash two-two-five-five-seven. Second.
And move the second, Ms. Rai, the rule, please.
Ganabon.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Min.
Aye.
Mia Shiro.
Aye.
O'Donnell.
Aye. Agenda item number one, application number two-one dash two-two-five-five-seven is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wu. Are we ready for agenda item number two, Ms. Rai?
Yeah, Mr. Uyoka is standing by and ready.
Okay, this is agenda, calling agenda item number two, application number two-one dash two-two-four-nine-seven from the Pearl Golf Management LLC. Mr. Uyoka.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, members of the Commission. Ms. Rai, Robert Uyoka, on behalf of Pearl Country Club. At this time, we'd like to request a continuance of two weeks on this matter to January twenty-eighth. We are still working on the amendment, and I haven't received the signed amendment yet, but I expect to receive it shortly.
Commissioners?
Uh, motion to continue agenda item two, application number two-one dash two-two-four-nine-seven to January twenty-eighth. Second.
Move the second, Ms. Rai, the rule, please.
Ganabon.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Min.
Aye.
Mia Shiro.
Aye.
O'Donnell.
Aye. Agenda item number two, application number two-one dash two-two-four-nine-seven is continued.
Thank you so much.
Um, are we take, we're going to take up agenda item number five, Mr. Uyoka?
That would be wonderful.
Okay, calling agenda item number five, application number two-one dash two-two-six-two-seven, Big City Diner Yipil.
Robert Uyoka, on behalf of Big City Diner. This is for an extension of a catering liquor license application for the Pearl Country Club.
Thank you very much. Commissioners?
You're muted, and I see.
Sorry. A motion to approve request number two-one dash two-two-seven-two-four. Second.
Move the second, Ms. Rai, the rule, please.
Ganabon.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Min.
Aye.
Mia Shiro.
Aye.
O'Donnell.
Aye. Agenda item number five, uh, application number two-one dash two-two-six-two-seven is approved.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome so much. Agenda item number three, application, are we ready for agenda item number three, Ms. Rai?
Uh, I see Ms. Glenn is online, Ms. Neil? Yeah, and Mr. Gohta, yeah, we're good.
Oh, Mr. Gohta, okay. Calling agenda item number three, application number two-one dash two-two-seven-zero-four from KUY Restaurants Limited.
Good afternoon, members of the Commission. Neo Gotah, appearing on behalf of KUY Restaurants LLC, doing business as Artisan by MW. Appearing with me is Jen Len, a manager. We have no changes to the investigative report. This is a temporary application request for the ground floor space at the Velocity showroom.
Thank you. Commissioners?
Motion to approve template application number two-one dash two-two-seven-zero-four. Second.
And move the second, Ms. Rai, the rule, please.
Ganabon.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Min.
Aye.
Mia Shiro.
Aye.
O'Donnell.
Aye. Agenda item number three, application number two-one dash two-two-seven-zero-four is approved.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Ms. Rai, does that conclude the preliminary hearings and requests?
Uh, no, you have, you have number four with Mr. Kiuchi ready in the room.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, this is agenda item number four, request number two-one dash two-two-seven-zero-one, Woo Jing, FNB, Hawaii. Mr. Kiuchi, please.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, members of the Commission, Keith Kiuchi, attorney and authorized agent for the licensee. We're requesting until April thirtieth, twenty-twenty-one, present tax clearance. The commission knows my client is remain closed for some period of time.
Commissioners?
Motion to approve request number two-one dash two-two-seven-zero-one until April thirtieth.
Did I hear a second?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Um, then move the second, Ms. Rai, the rule, please.
Ganabon.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Min.
Aye.
Mia Shiro.
Aye.
O'Donnell.
Aye. Agenda item number four, request number two-one dash two-two-seven-zero-one is continued until April thirtieth, twenty-twenty-one. Is that correct?
Uh, the extension is approved to that date.
Yeah.
Yes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We are ready to move into adjudications?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Madam Prosecutor?
Good afternoon, Chair members of the Commission, Deputy Corporation Counsel, P. J. Ogata.
Thank you, ma'am. Calling agenda item number six, Himalayan Kitchen LLC.
Hello, yes, sir. Hello?
We can hear you.
Hi, this is, my name is Sushil Basnet, K. Suman, from Himalayan Kitchen, representing Himalayan Kitchen owner and chef.
Tell your name for the court reporter.
Uh, Sushil Basnet, S.U.S.H.I.L., last name B.A.S.N.E.T.
Mr. Basnet, licensee failed to file with the Liquor Commission of the City and County of Honolulu on or before August fourth, two thousand twenty, a report as directed by the Commission showing the gross amount of liquor sold by the licensee during the twelve months beginning July first, two thousand nineteen, and ending June thirtieth, two thousand twenty, in violation of Rule three dash eighty-one dash seventeen point five-four, subsection C of the Rules of the Liquor Commission of the City and County of Honolulu.
Sir, how would you like to plead?
Oh, yes, I was late to file this one.
So you can accept the charges, sir, you can accept the charges, deny the charges, or plead no contest to the charges?
Uh, no contest. Is it being suspended right now because of that, or?
No, 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 hold on a second.
No contest, ma'am.
Hold on. Motion to accept the no contest plea.
Second.
Move the second, Ms. Rai, the rule, please.
Ganabon.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Min.
Aye.
Mia Shiro.
Aye.
O'Donnell.
Aye. Agenda item number six, Himalayan Kitchen LLC, the no contest plea is accepted.
Yes.
This was filed, oh, I'm sorry, um, the GLS report was filed thirteen days late. This is the fifth time this licensee has been late. My request is going to be a fine of four hundred fifty dollars.
Sir, now go ahead, um, can you please explain why, um, you keep turning in your GLS reports late?
Uh, you know, uh, I have no excuse on this, I'm sorry, just, um, I was trying to get laid with every, you know, thing going, I was just caught up at work and couldn't put it together on time, so this time again, I thought I was going to get it done this year, but, uh, couldn't get it done, I apologize, but not done intentionally.
Um, motion to approve the recommended fine of four hundred fifty dollars.
Second.
Move the second, Ms. Rai, the rule, please.
Ganabon.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Min.
Aye.
Mia Shiro.
Aye.
O'Donnell.
Aye. Agenda item number six, the recommended fine is approved.
And if you have questions, you can always call, um, our, our office, the Liquor Commission office during normal business hours, to ask for assistance in, in filing your GLS reports, okay?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Good. Thank you very much. Have a good weekend. Thank you. I'm good.
Ms. Rai, are we ready for agenda item number seven?
I am trying to con, I, I don't know if Mr., oh. I don't know if Mr. Kiuchi is representing this licensee or, no.
Sorry, Mr. Kiuchi is representing the licensee, um, but I spoke with the licensee earlier.
Okay, let me call, let me officially call the agenda number, ma'am. Uh, this is agenda item number seven, Tiana's Cafe and Karaoke. Madam Prosecutor?
Chair members of the Commission, I spoke with Matthew Chung, who is counsel, um, for Tiana Cafe. He informed me that this would be set for a contested hearing, but he was having a hard time getting someone to appear today to enter that plea, so on behalf of Tiana Cafe, I'm going to move to continue this to the next available date with the understanding that it will be set for a contested hearing, and I have no objection to any continuance.
Thank you.
Motion to continue agenda item number seven, Tiana Cafe and Karaoke to the next available date for a contested hearing.
Then move the second, Ms. Rai, the rule, please.
Ganabon.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Min.
Aye.
Mia Shiro.
Aye.
O'Donnell.
Aye. Agenda item number seven, Tiana's Cafe and Karaoke is continued to the next available date. Agenda item number eight, Ms. Rai?
Um, once again, I'm gonna, I spoke with the licensee, so if we can proceed, thank you.
Okay, let me officially, uh, this is agenda item number eight, Stack Sports Bar and Grill.
Chair members of the Commission, I spoke with a representative from Stack's Sports Bar and Grill who was unable to make it today due to a medical appointment. Um, I am going to move to continue this to February twenty-first for, um, an adjudication hearing, and I have no objection to any continuance.
To continue agenda item number eight, Stack Sports Bar and Grill to February twenty-first, two thousand twenty-one.
I'm sorry, twenty-fifth, I misspoke.
Uh, I'm sorry, I'll revise, uh, continue to February twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-one.
Second.
Then move the second, Ms. Rai, the rule, please.
Ganabon.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Min.
Aye.
Mia Shiro.
Aye.
O'Donnell.
Aye. Agenda item number eight is continued till February twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-one. Agenda item number nine?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair.
One minute, please, Mr. Kiuchi, thank you. Uh, agenda item number nine, King Yo Karaoke Lounge.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, members of the Commission, Keith Kiuchi for the licensee. We waive reading of the charge and deny the charges asked to be set for an adjudication hearing.
Ms. Ogata?
I have no objection to continuance, um, with the understanding that this will be set for a contested hearing.
Motion to continue agenda item number nine, King Yo Karaoke Lounge, to the next available date for a contested hearing.
Second.
Then check in, Ms. Rai, the rule, please.
Ganabon.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Min.
Aye.
Mia Shiro.
Aye.
O'Donnell.
Aye. Agenda item number nine, King Yo Karaoke, um, is continued to the next available date for a contested hearing. Thank you, Mr. Kiuchi. Agenda item number ten, Club Join Day.
Uh, again, good afternoon, Mr. Chair, members of the Commission, Keith Kiuchi for the licensee. Waive reading of the charge, deny the charges, ask to be set for a contested hearing.
And I have no objection to a continuance to the next available date for a contested hearing.
A motion to continue agenda item number ten, Club Join Us, to the next available date for a contested hearing.
Second.
Move the second, Ms. Rai, the rule, please.
Ganabon.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Min.
Aye.
Mia Shiro.
Aye.
O'Donnell.
Aye. Agenda item number ten, Club Join Us, uh, is it continued to the next available date for a contested hearing?
Thank you.
You're welcome, Mr. Kiuchi. Um, Ms. Rai, are we ready for agenda item number eleven?
Uh, yes, Mr. Mansell is, um, in the room on the phone.
Okay, this is agenda item number eleven, Board Riders Bar and Grill.
Hello, this is James Mansell, licensee, Board Riders Bar and Grill, J.A.M.E.F., M.A.N.S.E.L.L.
Charge one in this one, on or about January twenty-sixth, two thousand eighteen, in the City and County of Honolulu, State of Hawaii, licensee failed to comply with any other laws applicable to the business of licensee, whether in existence at the time of issue of such license or enacted or amended from time to time thereafter, to it violations of the fire code of the City and County of Honolulu in violation of section two-eighty-one dash thirty-eight of the Hawaii Revised Statutes. Charge two is on or about January twenty-sixth, two thousand eighteen, in the City and County of Honolulu, State of Hawaii, licensee utilized an electronic or otherwise recorded payroll registration for the purpose of keeping employee time cards or other adequate records in accordance with Rule three dash eighty-two dash thirty-eight point four, without first obtaining the administrator's approval in violation of Rule three dash eighty-two dash thirty-eight point four, subsection C of the Rules of the Liquor Commission of the City and County of Honolulu. Um, Chair members of the Commission, before Mr. Mansell enters a plea, I'm going to be moving to dismiss charge two. Mr. Mansell provided copies of paper on time cards to me after I had received this case for adjudication.
To withdraw charge two.
Second.
Move the second, Ms. Rai? Move the second to dismiss charge number two. Ms. Rai, the rule, please.
Ganabon.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Min.
Aye.
Mia Shiro.
Aye.
O'Donnell.
Aye. So agenda item number eleven, Board Riders Bar and Grill, uh, charge number two is dismissed.
And Mr. Mansell, how would you like to plead as to charge? I'm sorry.
May I ask a question?
Sure, go ahead.
I have used both time cards and electronics since two thousand and seven, and when I started doing both, I never knew we needed to apply it to commission or anything.
Okay, sir, that charge has been dismissed. Sir, Mr. Mansell, that charge has been dismissed. Do you have a question in that regard, or?
My question is, my question is, do I have to also have Liquor Commission permission to use electronic on card?
Yes, you do. If you will contact us, we can help you with that, that procedure.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Mr. Mansell, how would you like to plead as to charge one of the violation?
Which is charge one?
I was read to you is a violation of the fire code.
Okay. I would like to, no contest, but with explanation?
Okay. Motion to accept the no contest plea for charge one.
Second.
My explanation?
No, hold on, sir, hold on, sir.
Okay.
Um, agenda item number eleven, Board Riders Bar and Grill, uh, charge number one, the no contest plea is accepted. Uh, I'm sorry, let me back up. Ms. Rai, move the second, the rule, please.
Ganabon.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Min.
Aye.
Mia Shiro.
Aye.
O'Donnell.
Aye. Agenda item number eleven, the no contest plea is accepted.
Ogata, what is your recommendation?
This is the first violation of this type, recommended fine is five hundred dollars.
Okay, Mr. Mansell, go ahead.
My explanation is, I had done the semi-annual inspection of kitchen hood and system and cylinder and an additional semi-inspection. I gave that invoice to the fire, the fireman that came, and we thought that they just didn't put the tag on. This is October fifth. The next time I actually saw anything about this, because I called the people and said, you got to bring the tag back down, they said, okay. On January eighteenth, this is two thousand and seventeen August that I did it. So on January eighteenth, they came back again and said, you didn't have the tick, the things on it. So I immediately called and got it done on February second. I got a letter from them saying it, so I've addressed this issue with the hood for twenty years now, and I've never had a violation on it before. We've never had a fire at any of my places, and this is just me not knowing that they didn't tag it, and then when I did know they tagged it, I called them to get it done, and as soon as they came back the next time, I went and got it done within a week. And, you know, I just, to tell you the truth, right now, five hundred dollars is way out of my budget. And I did everything I could.
Thank you, Mr. Mansell. Um, Ms. Ogata, you have anything to add?
Um, yes, Mr. Mansell, it sent me some information. It looks like they did have, um, their hood inspected in late August of two thousand seventeen, but the range hood was unsatisfactory. I don't have any notes beyond, um, what he sent me, which was an invoice. But, um, Honolulu Fire Services did come out on February second of two thousand eighteen, found the hood to be satisfactory, and the fire department went back on February thirteenth and, um, found the hood to be satisfactory.
So everything is in order?
As of the information that I have received, that in February of two thousand eighteen, everything was in order.
Okay.
He did rectify the situation.
And, and one more thing, on that invoice that I saw, until, um, Ms. Ogata showed me that it said range hood unisatisfactory and small print at the bottom, I'd never seen that until to this day, four years later.
Mr. Mansell, have you had any issues since?
No issues since.
Uh, my motion is to, uh, issue a letter of reprimand.
Second.
Then move the second, Ms. Rai, the rule, please.
Ganabon.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Min.
Aye.
Mia Shiro.
Aye.
O'Donnell.
Aye. Agenda item number eleven, charge number one, a letter of, uh, reprimand shall be issued. Let's move on to agenda item number twelve, Board Riders Bar and Grill.
Sorry, Mr. Mansell, can you introduce yourself one more time?
James Mansell, licensee, Board Riders Bar and Grill.
On or about February sixteen, two thousand nineteen, in the City and County of Honolulu, State of Hawaii, licensee permitted liquor to be consumed on the premises of the licensee or on any premises connected therewith, to it just outside the entrance of the license premises, whether there, whether purchased there or not, where consumption in such area is not permitted by the terms of the license in violation of section two-eighty-one dash seventy-eight, subsection B two of the Hawaii Revised Statutes.
Sir Mansell, how would you like to plead to this charge?
Not guilty.
Um, you understand that, um, to contest it, then we'll need to schedule it for a later date? Or is Ms. Ogata prepared to do a contested case today?
I would be moving to continue it for, uh, for an adjudication hearing at a later date.
Is that all right with you, Mr. Mansell?
Yeah, but you know, I, I don't want to take more of your time. I, I pleaded no contest on it with explanation.
Okay.
Um, I plead, because I don't want to, this has been going on for three years now.
Okay. Uh, motion to accept the no contest plea.
Second.
Then move the second, uh, Ms. Rai, the rule, please.
Ganabon.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Min.
Aye.
Mia Shiro.
Aye.
O'Donnell.
Aye. Agenda item number twelve, the no contest plea is accepted.
This is the first violation of this kind, recommended fine is one thousand dollars.
Can you provide more detail, Ms. Ogata?
Yes, um, on the date of the incident, two liquor investigators, um, were doing compliance checks, um, in the area, drove into the parking lot of Board Riders Bar and Grill, where they observed three males approximately ten feet from the entrance in the parking lot, um, when one of the males had a clear glass cup with a corner brewing, brewing company marking about a third full of what turned out to be alcohol, and he did consume it outside of the premises.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Mansell, how would you like to plead? I'm sorry, that's, would you have, do you have any comment?
Yes. Um, on this particular night, this gentleman stepped about two or three feet outside of our door without us knowing, and drank a little bit out of his glass, okay? Um, I looked at the camera, we weren't that busy, I looked at the bartender who was standing there. We're clear view of the, of the person that did that, apparently she knew this person. I terminated this bartender. I, um, I don't know how, you know, just someone walking out there three feet like that. First of all, if it was busy, she might not have seen us, you know, um. I, I don't know what to say other than the fact that, the one thing that bothered me is this, and I'm looking at the report right now. It says, after retrieving the glass cup from Frigilani, the, the person that did it, um, they asked, Frigilani asked the Liquor Commission agent if he was going to be in trouble for that, and they told him no. And it's just that kind of hits me the wrong way. I would hope that we would all be on the same side and tell the people, yeah, you're in trouble, you can't bring this out of a license premise. There's a sign right there saying you can't bring it out of a license premise. I did eighty-six this person for life, and the girl that was bartending that was really in clear view, because we have a, a window you can see right there, and it was one of her last night. I was tempted to get rid of her before that, but I did, when someone gave me notice, I didn't want to fire them before that, and I shouldn't have had her working there. So I would plead you to, if you could find a way to say, but keep this thousand dollars suspended until if I get another violation of this kind ever, I'll pay the thousand dollars. But at this point in time, we are cash, cash strapped for sure. I have two restaurants that are, I'm over five hundred thousand dollars in debt with landlords, and, uh, I'm sixty-two and I was recently retired, and, uh, it's really tough to throw out a thousand dollars to this, but. And uh, it's really tough to throw out a thousand dollars to this, but, you know, she let it happen. You know, I saw it right on camera, and I, I I, the only thing I looked at that I was thinking of fighting it is the fact that it says removing alcohol from license premise, which we did not remove li- alcohol from license premise, the guy just walked outside. And his buddies were decked shoulder to shoulder, so it would be hard to stop that, but I'm really on it at this point in time, so I don't believe it'll happen again. That's about it, I won't take any more of your time.
Thank you for that explanation, Mister Mansell, um, we understand that um, all the licensees are having it, having difficulty right now. However, this is a very serious violation, you as the licensee are strictly responsible for making sure that consumption only happens on your licensed premises, and you're responsible for making sure your employees are trained to uh, contain the alcohol consumption on your licensed premises, so I'm sorry, but my motion is to uh, prove the recommended fine of one thousand dollars.
How would you? How would you stop someone from walking outside in a second, you know, and that's a thousand dollars, that's not right.
I understand, um, you're upset, Mister Mansell, um, but it is your responsibility to figure out how to keep your customers contained, other licensees do it, and I'm sure you can as well, uh, there's.
We do all the time, done it for twenty years.
Sir, you had your opportunity to, Mister Mansell, you had your opportunity to explain, thank you.
Mister Mansell, do not argue with my commissioners, hire security, follow the rules.
There's a motion on the floor.
I'm second the motion.
Moved in second, Mister I, the role, please.
Ganabon.
I.
Lee.
I.
Min.
I.
Miyashiro.
Hi.
O'Donnell.
Hi, agenda item number twelve, the recommended fine of one thousand dollars is approved. Calling agenda item number, calling agenda item number thirteen, Board Riders Bar and Grill.
Mister Mansell, can you introduce yourself one more time, please?
James Mansell, licensee Board Riders Bar and Grill.
On or about July twenty three two thousand twenty, in the city and county of Honolulu, state of Hawaii. Licensee failed to comply with laws applicable to the business of licensee, whether in in existence at the time of such license or enacted or amended from time to time thereafter to it violating the terms of Office of Mayor of City and County of Honolulu's Emergency Order Number twenty twenty dash nineteen, COVID nineteen novel coronavirus. Second amend, second amendment to Honolulu four point oh dated Ja- July fourteen two thousand twenty in violation of section two eighty one dash thirty eight of the Hawaii revised statutes.
Mister Mansell, how would you like to plead?
Not guilty.
Okay, uh, would you like to uh, be rescheduled for a contested hearing? Mister Mansell.
Sure, sure.
All right, Ms. Ogata.
No objection to um, continuing this to the next available date for a contested hearing.
Okay, thank you. Motion to continue agenda item number thirteen, Board Riders Bar and Grill to the next available date for a contested hearing.
Second. Second.
Thank you, it's been moved in second, Miss Araya, the role, please.
Ganabon.
I.
Lee.
I.
Min.
I.
Miyashiro.
Hi.
O'Donnell.
Hi, agenda item number thirteen is continued to the next available date for a contested hearing.
Thank you, Ms. Ogata.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you very much. Uh, Miss Araya, uh, calling agenda item number fourteen. Uh, I have an administrative matter I would like to um, put on the record, ma'am.
Okay.
Okay, so as everybody knows, I've been appointed to the Hartboard by Senate President um, Koche. Um, and according to the revised charges of the city and county, uh, cannot sit on two public positions. So I will be submitting my official resignation once I have been seated and sworn in. I have not yet had a response from the Hartboard, but the next uh, agenda meeting is for the twenty first of this month. I'd like to thank all of the commission, commissioner, president, and uh, past who have had the privilege to serve with, truly incredible people, it's been my pleasure. I'd like to thank Administrator Caro and Assistant Administrator Harai for their knowledge and assistance to the commissioners at all times. I'd also like to thank the entire staff, enforcement, licensing, our court reporters, our court counsel, our prosecutors, and all the employees of the uh, Honolulu Commission, uh, I've had an incredible ten years, I wanna thank you all. I want you to keep up the good work that you have been doing as a team. Uh, this is, as I've always said, the hardest working commission in the city and county of Honolulu, the state of Hawaii, and probably in the United States, we meet every Thursday, same time. Unfortunately, that's not always the same place, but keep up the good work and um, I will officially, uh, once I get the confirmation, Mister I, I will officially submit a formal uh, letter of um, resignation. With that being said, aloha, no, meeting adjourned.